All right.
We're good to get a place on it. Get that thing locked on.
Are you in there?
I'm in the middle.
Did you see I slid up?
Yeah.
No.
Literally by.
I'm like, rolling. It's trouble over there. It's trouble. It's pretty jokes.
Sorry.
Pretty jokes.
All right, well now we all have to wait for Brian. You should mic him like that Texas.
He's gotta let Joanne in. Open the door.
Yeah.
At two minutes we lock the doors.
So now we don't have to take a break between the two meetings. We can just keep rocking this out.
There you go. Just keep rolling.
All right.
I didn't make a pit stop.
That's your fault.
Is everyone ready to get done with this one?
That's why I brought my cooler.
It's been two hours. Yeah, look at him.
I wasn't prepared last night.
He's already. Open up the door.
Is that your water that I pilfered? Sorry, ma'am.
No, I brought it downstairs.
Oh, thank you.
Uh oh, one more. All right. We're all here?
Okay.
We're all here?
Okay. So I think we left off discussing engineering and, you know, J.J. Bennetts had worked with the petitioner and I think they're all satisfied with what their stormwater management plan is and the materials down there. I don't believe there's gonna be any backed up flooding going on with that one.
I guess traffic. That's probably something we can do.
Yeah, and traffic is one of those evils of success, right? That we, we hope that's a problem we're gonna have in a way, but Canal Road is very long. I think it's over a mile long. If, if we have traffic backing up to Division, the petitioner's already agreed to pay for police department overtime procedures in regards to mitigating some of that and signage. And then obviously, long-term, whether we can potentially get a connection between Division and Canal more directly through the IDNR easement, that would be the way to go. Hopefully, we might be able to get some grant money to help the petitioner and the Park District and possibly the city at some point in the future, so.
All right. So you guys have agreed to pay for police services?
Okay.
Mayor, with the traffic, that, like you were saying, that trigger? I'd like that, some way to document what that trigger is in the future. Traffic-wise, the residents that stood up at the planning and zoning meeting about traffic, like somebody, if there is traffic there and somebody's just like, "Let me find a way out of here," and now they're going around in circles in their neighborhood and everything, you know, signs are great in, signs are also great out, trying to make sure that people are there. So if that gets tightened up, we've figured out what that plan is, and then the things that were confusing me was, you know, major haunt hours, times, you're gonna have somebody there, but there isn't a, and I know business kinda relies on it, but the city usually gets the calls, not the Park District, when something goes wrong or somebody's in the neighborhood or it's backed up all the way to 159th or whatever it is, but if there's some way you can kinda delineate that and say, "If, you know, between whatever days and hours, you will for sure at least have one person there on call that's ready to start doing it," you know, we're knocking on wood that traffic is, you know, people are gonna be there and there will be traffic, so it's headed off before it becomes complaints or anything from the neighborhood. And they had complaints about, because they don't have sidewalks, so kids are playing around in there, so just making sure we mitigate that and put that down on paper, I think would be a great thing to start first.
Okay.
I got a quick question. This particular piece of property, with it being on Park District land, for example, the school, they will not be able to benefit with tax revenue in the traditional sense through real estate taxes. Has there been any discussion to put a small fee on each ticket to generate some revenue for the local school?
Well, actually, Tony, school board president of TAF, came out and talked a little bit. Oh, were you gonna address it?
No, go ahead, Mayor.
Okay. Tony came out and he's like, "Hey, man." Unfortunately, the only thing that's in TAF School District is like a park bench. I think most of it's in Fairmont, but there hasn't been any talk with Fairmont about adding taxes that are unique to it, because I don't think Park District land gets taxed. Is that correct, if I remember right?
No government.
Yeah.
Just to, Mayor, if I could just respond to the back half of that. We have agreed to pay, to continue the ticket fee to the Park District, so there won't be any direct payment to schools, but the, the Park District does participate in a lot of programs related to education and to kids and children, and we actually help them now in bringing some of those day camps down to the paintball park. So there will be a residual effect from the haunted house, albeit not directly to a, to a school.
Okay. Has anyone communicated that to Tony or TAF?
Well, yeah, we sat down and had the conversation.
We actually had a meeting, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. What else? Anything else?
Just the, the things with the zoning, if there's another way, that, that trigger, I know we, I don't know if this is part of the road discussion too, but the, the parking, landscaping and, and the building being a pole barn essentially, and your, the plan is for you to cover the entire building, if we can put that stuff in writing, we're not saying that, you know, it just goes away, you don't have to ever do it, and it could stay a pole barn and you don't have to do the parking lot again in, in years, but if we can come to an agreement where we say, "Three years, parking lot needs to be done." I'd hate to see this year one, I get you're under pressure, but, you know, year two that you don't have landscaping, it's just a barren area there, and you're, I know you're trying to keep as much as you can, but to get that haunted house feel, so it's just not open. Again, we're not trying to set rules, we're hoping you do the right thing, it's just if you don't do the right thing, or you sell it, or whatever it may be, that it does look good. And in that building, you know, if, at least we have some agreement that that building will be covered and it will all look like a haunted house, or your...
Not all. It's mainly the north side, right?
Correct.
Because the, the south side...
So if that's the case, and I saw that, I didn't know how far that was actually going, if, if we can paint that, the rest of that, so, I mean, I don't know what color that is, I don't know if it's a red and blue or white, and it's just gonna stick out. The underlying thing that I'm looking at is that, you know, I know we keep saying it's, it's in the middle of nowhere, nobody's gonna be go back there, but we're making this a destination point. So we're, we're physically saying, we're directing people to go back there, let's clean that up, let's make that building look part of that. And I understand the whole part of the first year and everything, but paint it, full paint it, make it look like a haunted house, the whole thing, you know, some type of agreement so we can say it will eventually get done in two years, three years, and not be like, "Well, if funds come, we'll do this."
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that it's, it's necessary for a few different reasons. One, I don't know if you, you're familiar with the work we've already done, done there with respect to Legacy Paintball and the way we've improved it. I just had some out-of-town guests, who's a friend of mine from Fort Myers, Florida, who's an international paintball, a female professional paintball player, and her first response coming in the gate was, "This looks like Disney World." Like, to the paintball industry, we've set a standard down there that's unlike anything else in the, in the industry. So we're creating that standard as we move through. I don't know how familiar you are with the soil conditions down there, but they're not that great. I mean, we're not gonna grow flowers and, and things like that, and it's also not necessarily conducive to, to what we're trying to depict down there, which is a more of a austere, creepy tone. We do intend to add some foliage. It, it helps us to block off some of the sightlines and things to make it more restrictive. We've worked really hard on the detention plan to make sure we didn't level all of the natural terrain as well as plant life down there. We wanna keep and maintain as, as much as we can. The building itself, we wanna facade it as well. We have a vested interest in trying to create that atmosphere as we move forward. With respect to locking in fixed dates, obviously that becomes very problematic from, from our side, because that all relates to how our operation is successful and are we hitting our numbers. So we can't give you the assurances in terms of locking those into a contract to say, "Hey, at year three, we're gonna do this," but just know that our, our interests are aligned with yours. I mean, those are things we wanna see develop from a business perspective.
And, and I get that. In landscaping, let me clarify that, if it's shrubs, plants, you know, I'm not talking about manicured everything here. If it wants to look manicure or natural, it wants to look like a forest, make it look like a forest. I'm totally for that, as long as it's not a just bare open, you know, we got crushed gravel everywhere and it's just an open spot, now you've got a pole barn that's in there. Just taking it to the next level. Again, I'm not saying to, to make this to hurt you, but I'm just saying, you know, if three years down the road, things are going gangbusters and everything, we say, "Okay, now it's about time for you to do the parking lot, let's do the building," and you say, "No, I, I, I don't, I don't wanna do it."
Yeah, and I would encourage you to look at what's there now. I think you'd be actually very surprised how that, that building location's tucked in amidst trees and foliage now and a swamp that's down there, so...
You're talking about the new building, the haunted house that you're...
The haunted house location now, correct, yeah. It's not a barren, open wasteland. That's actually what we were fighting against. The point is, we wouldn't have put it down here for all the troubles that we ran into from a development perspective. If we wanted to put it in an open lot, we could've found one. We wanna put it in an area that actually has all the features that you're just describing, and we've maintained that and preserved that.
Right. Anything else? Okay.
So, how are you guys...
Yeah.
Go ahead, did you have something else?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we were going to seek a motion to vote to have this on the city council agenda for action later this evening.
Somebody wants to speak out there.
Oh, please.
I'm able to be here. I have a little concern with this, and I am a resident of that little neighborhood down there. And I have been there for about 29 years, okay? I've lived in Lockport all of my life. And I have raised four children and I have six grandchildren, okay? I am concerned about all the traffic, people, that it will generate coming down into our neighborhood. Two years ago, we had the police chasing a man that ended up finding our street, went underneath the bridge down there and shot himself in the head, okay? These, this kind of attraction is going to attract people who are young, irresponsible, drinking, and the traffic is gonna be mayhem. If you look at the Glasscocks Haunted House on Weber Road, they have to pay for the Crest Hill Police or Crest Hill Police Direct the traffic with their squad cars and everything, full force. They also have to pay a busing company to bus people from Menards over to Glasscocks, okay? And they do that for the point of safety, because when these people are drinking and they're acting irresponsible and they're crossing the streets and stuff, if something happens to them, then they could turn around and hold Glasscocks responsible. So they could also do this to the city of Lockport, Delwood Park, all of it, okay? And my point is, okay, you know, F, I don't want them in my neighborhood. We've had enough down there, and we do flood all the time. All the time. And she has the, the data and everything a lot better than I do. I'm not yet prepared, you know, to speak to you guys, but I did need to make my concerns. No.
I'm, I'm sorry, what was your name?
I'm Rosetta Costello.
Sure. I, I still, I can't wrap my head around the, the flooding concerns. I can't wrap my head around the traffic concerns.
Yeah, well, okay. Right now, Division, the street, it comes down, there's Canal Road here, okay? Then you come into our little neighborhood, and you have two houses, and then you make the left-hand turn, okay, which I believe is Davy's, then another left-hand turn which takes you into Canal Road, okay? You're passing two houses here, one house here, and they speed in there.
Rosetta, I get that. I'm talking about, at the traffic, like, let's talk. The flooding, I don't understand why this keeps coming up. I don't understand how this is affecting flooding.
Well, what Sandy had brought up was them altering the, the elevation of the land and stuff, and that's what ca- caused the flooding back then. That's what the report came out. Not that down there it caused it, but higher up, and then for us, if they're pushing water back this way towards us, is it gonna get worse?
Actually, I think if anything, it should be less. You guys are putting in detention ponds, which are not there now.
Can I, can I just interject? When, when, when we use the, when elevations are being discussed in regards to a building, Christiana, could, could you, it's different than, we're talking about a different thing altogether. We're talking about the elevation of a building versus elevation of land, okay?
Right, but they're going to be moving the land to the building.
Could you go ahead and, and maybe give a quick overview or, of what the term elevation in regards to a building versus elevation in regards to, to, to land?
The engineering department.
Okay, well then, then I'll do it. Then I'll do it.
He did a pretty good job right there, Darren, that, talking about elevation of facade on the building versus elevation in topography.
When we use the term elevation in regards to a building, we're not talking about 600, 600 feet above sea level versus, versus 800 feet above sea level. Elevations is, means this is what the house, this is what the, the facade of the building is gonna look like.
Yeah, it's just a, it's an architectural term.
It's an architectural term. Maybe an architect could go ahead and explain it.
New one. Architect in there? A new one.
Not letting the water have a place to go to. And plus, also another fact is that as long as I've lived down there, I was told that that was a wildlife refuge area also back in there. And so I have been floored away with even the paintball thing being done. And there was no sign posted where we had the right to speak about anything before that paintball.
Well, that's, quite frankly, it's 'cause it's Park District property, Rosetta. I mean, this is...
Okay, but they're using our neighborhood for an entryway, an exit.
Well, sure. They use my neighborhood as an entryway to their Challenge Fitness. I'm, I live a mile away from Challenge Fitness. You live a mile away from the paintball park. All these roads are access roads. The real issue that I see right now is, as people enter in, there's a lot of people coming in, to me, that's the sole issue as far as the concern for this neighborhood, is like suddenly you're gonna have a lot of traffic that's never been there before. I know, just quite frankly, the fact that since they've been there, it looks better already. That old garage that was...
Now, down there it does. You know, they, they had old garage on the corner?
Yeah.
The city tore that down, and they were doing that way before this...
No, no, no. No, no, we weren't doing that. We did it because of the paintball park. We worked with them to make it happen. So because of this development down there...
Well, I know there was plans on doing it.
It was never gonna happen. I'm the one who pushed that with Ron Caneva, only because these guys were coming in and we were trying to get some development down there. That thing would've sat, abandoned, it would still be there, Rosetta.
Mayor, if I could interject, I think, you know, the concern on the flooding or on the traffic, we could, if the petitioner would agree that as they build this out and things get busy, they could, we could have a traffic study done during that peak first season in October to find out what these traffic counts are really going to be and project at a point where they get too much for those intersections, and that study could be, you know, I don't, I'm not sure how expensive that is, but I, I don't think it's too bad to have a firm come out and take a look at the existing conditions, take the time to evaluate it during the peak season this year. That could also give us some data in regards to potential warrants for the new intersection that's, is desired, and see what some professional engineering people have to say about what, what those roads can take.
And personally, for me, the, that quick left turn as opposed to that kind of U-turn is important. It's important to me to get that from people entering into that neighborhood. If people are turning before then, then it, it isolates it, and I think that's, and that's where going back to, what, what are the triggers that are gonna enable us to do that? And, and I, and I understand what Jim's saying, guys. It's like, if, if we don't have specific triggers for certain things that we're concerned about, conceivably, they could never happen. And while I think you guys do a good job, it's not prudent as a council to just leave things open-ended. And so finding, we've got two weeks here to talk about this road, but like finding a way to deal with this road and how that intersects and changes, because, you know, I, I don't want the, a bunch of people driving into that neighborhood. There's always gonna be somebody that goes too far, but if we have proper signage and the turn is there, it keeps people from entering in. And so that is a concern of mine as well, so...
The way the roads are right now, they're going to enter our neighborhood. They're going to circle our neighborhood, looking for another way out. I really think there should be an entrance off of State Street.
You know what, Rosetta? Everybody pulls into my driveway and makes a U-turn, and I live here, it's just life. It really is, I'm sorry. I live on, I live on Ninth Street. Every day, I get three people come into my driveway, turn around because they went too far. That's just what happens. And there, when I was a kid, I could walk across, you know, Ninth Street when I was a kid. When I was 20, I'd walk across Ninth Street and I didn't even have to look both ways. You know, stuff does change. We're not a 5,000-person hamlet anymore. So that, that stuff happens.
Well, why can't they make an entrance off of State Street directly into that park area? I mean, they're, they're going to generate a lot of money, but there's another aspect also, and that is that when the haunted house is not in operation, then the fall attracting people, it's gonna be a vacant...
It's like that now.
Building. Yeah, but it's gonna be a vacant building. And Legacy has already pulled more people down there too, with the paintballs.
Well, I, that is something another person has brought up to me. It's like, how do you guys maintain this throughout the other months? Like, what goes on there? I mean, you obviously have a vested concern not to leave it abandoned. Yes?
You have a vested interest in Legacy.
Yeah, sure. Well, just hold off on that one.
He's there with Legacy too, right?
Yeah. So I mean, you, you guys have, I'm sure you have a way to address how, how you leave it in the offseason. Yeah, I was gonna say something else, I forgot. But why don't you just address it, maybe what I was gonna say pop into my head. Paul?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, not to beat a dead horse, but the reason we secured the agreement with IDNR was so that the future plan would involve connecting Canal to Division. It's, it's not just about protecting the residents there, but there's a vested interest for us as a business to not force people to make that left turn, left turn, and then snake around. It just doesn't make much sense. I mean, we want people to, to go right off of Division Street onto Canal. So very early on, that was one of the first things that we asked with respect to the license agreement with IDNR. So that was with Legacy Paintball. That continues to be a concern for us. As far as year-round, it's not gonna be a vacant building, as I'm sure John can attest to. As soon as the season starts, we take a week off, we're right into planning and the next build phase. So if you remember, on the floor plan, there's an area that's effectively gonna be used for production of the next, next year sets, next year scenes. There'll be people working down there all year round as we do with Legacy Paintball. So our three months is all of our planning period between effectively November and into the next season, January, we're planning for the next year. So there are Legacy Paintball employees there, as well as there'll be Legacy Events employees there as well, so...
All right. Then that, I forgot about that. You're right. It makes sense, 'cause I remember visiting your other site, and it's like, this doesn't happen. You don't just pull that together in, in six days. You guys are there, there's a lot of animatronics, there's a lot of work that goes in costuming. Okay. Oh, I know what I was gonna say. Making a, making a road off of State Street, then you gotta build a bridge over the canal. That's just like inconceivable. That, you get to the other side of the canal via the Division Street Bridge. It's the bridge that, which is a public bridge, so... That's, I'm sorry, that's all I was gonna say. All right.
I'm not sure if you've seen this.
Yeah, yeah. Well, by the way, I, I'm fine, I don't have a problem doing this. Future things, we fill out the cards so we can keep better records of who speaks and who doesn't speak.
One of the side...
Yeah, yeah, and then, and like I said, I don't, you cut the first, probably first time you're running a meeting, so that's fine, I don't care. Please come on up and talk. But in the future, it's best to fill out cards so that way we have the information, and then we just give it to Alice if you fill one out. It just helps with records. So please, just name and...
Thank you. I'm Nicholas here. I live at 1608 Prairie, which is right down, actually, right next to Rosetta. There's pretty much no purpose in beating the dead horse of the traffic. That's gonna be an issue no matter what it is. We finally got that bridge done. It's been talked about for the last 45 minutes, we don't have to go over it. First thing I'd like to say is, I, I bought my home here 11 and a half years ago. I own my own, my home outright. I'm not a renter. I live down here, I love this town. It's fantastic. Minus the traffic, one of my concerns that was brought up was that there, we, there would be no more need for policing down there. I find that, you know, a little rough. I, I was one of the ones who spoke out at the zoning commission with my wife. The only thing I would ask is, this is gonna happen no matter what, pretty much. It already passed the zoning commission, everybody's excited about it. It's gonna happen. It's just a matter, at this point, if it's gonna happen correctly, which, I'm a member of Legacy Paintball, I'll tell you right now. I love the paintball park back there. It, it was a dump. I think they're doing a great job back there. This does concern me. Some parts of it do bother me. Not so much that they're trying to expand or, or help the city, but just about the concern about where we live down there. The biggest thing is, is the policing issue. You know, I brought this up at the zoning commission, you know, I understand that this is Park District property. We have Lock, we have Park District Police Department, they're never down there. They can say that they're down there, they're never down there. We don't get a lot of policing down there at all, by our city or by the township. So with this happening and knowing that it's gonna move forward, I'm not gonna argue any points. The only thing I would say is, if this is gonna happen, I would just suggest that the city at least stands up and they do something about policing during the hours of operation, 'cause it's gonna happen. And, and instead of going around in circles, I think that the fair thing to do for the residents that are down there with the traffic and everything else, is if they're gonna supply off-duty Lockport police, that's fine, but somebody's gonna need to have to police that intersection. Lights and a couple of signs ain't gonna do it. I mean, let's be realistic, we got 100 cars that turn down there at 3:00 in the afternoon coming over Ninth Street Bridge. I mean, and no disrespect, but three cars pulling into your driveway compared to 200 cars per hour that are gonna be coming down that road is a huge difference. And with all the children down there, which there's a lot of kids, my son's down there, no sidewalks, I would say that the biggest thing to do to move forward with this the right way is just to do it the right way, and that is to have it policed during the hours of operations for that area, and just make sure that it's cleaned up, 'cause we're, we are gonna have a lot of people that are down there that are younger. You know, obviously, kids are gonna be drinking, there's gonna be trash and everything else. And as you brought up, where the house that fell down, where you guys cleaned up, you know, in order for them to move in to help make the property look great, well, I applaud that, I do, but the problem is, is you guys knocked down a house, cleaned it up, and now nobody maintains that property. So did it really help them? No, we just moved some junk to have more junk. I mean, that would, that would be perfect...
That thing that was gonna collapse on some kid who played in there.
Well, don't get me wrong, I'm surprised it didn't. Actually, I think it tipped over before it even started doing it, but I mean, that's, there's perfect property for signage if it's maintained. I mean, I...
We don't actually own it, we just took it down because the lady...
I don't think you guys had a choice, 'cause the thing tipped over.
It was gonna go down, right. The policing, I think it's a fair question, and I think we should hook up with the Park District and ask them, you know, what are their plans for policing it with their Lockport Township Police Department? And also, I guess that's another thing for Dave, you know, as this, Nick, I mean, as, as any part of the city gets more activated with things that causes issues with like, how do we patrol it? And it's part of growth. And so I guess maybe that's something that I could ask you and Terry to look into over the next week here about, as an increase in activity happens in this part of town, like, what are your average patrols? Do they ever go down there at all? Do they, do we feel like we should have an extra patrol drives through there from time to time because there's increased activity?
We're talking about 200 cars per hour, to not add any other police presence down there or any other patrolling. I mean, you're talking 200 cars per...
Well, I'm talking about for two reasons. One, I'm talking about now there's just more people, so there's, you know, that's what police do, they make for protection. But the other aspect of it is just traffic control, which is different. We're not paying for traffic control, and we're very clear about that. Legacy will take that whether they, you know, we hire off-duty police or they have private, you know, firms for traffic control or whatever, that's their cost. I think the question, and we'll bring up with the lock, the Park District policing, just because I'm curious now, is like, how are you guys maintaining? When are you sending more patrols? I'm sure they've never sent people that, well, no, I shouldn't say that. The need to send more people down there with increased, you know, activity is going to be necessary, so...
But with the permit for this, or with us, with everybody approving a special permit to build on the, be realistic, there's, why it would be residential makes no sense. There's, I agree with that 100%, but couldn't part of the permitting be that they would have to have something in place in order to protect for the traffic and everything else?
Well, that's just part of the agreement, it's not really a zoning thing. That's, that was my concern about, like, we just, we formulate a plan that for X amount of days, whenever it is, and it's flexible, whatever it is, we'll work with them, that this is the catch-all that I'm talking about. Here's a resident that's talking about that road, that's a park district road, that policing's not here. That's not fair to our police department, that should be a concern to the Park District, and please feel free to contact them, because that is their property and they have their own police department. So, where that line is of where we pick up traffic control, they pick up traffic control, we work together, and there is a plan. There should be a plan of between times, hours, and, you know, what part of the road, you know? You have some idea there, so we're not reacting, we're proactive to it. Again, knocking on wood, this is supposed to be a great attraction, and we're, you know, have lines, you know?
If I can just address this, to be fair, Chief did reach out to me to discuss this. At the time, we didn't have any approvals on the road, it was very early in the project, so we had scheduled time to sit down. We've agreed to pay for the traffic control, we're going to do that. We want to keep people out of neighborhoods, don't want kids to get hurt down there. I know Chief Waxwell is not here, to be fair to them, the Park District Police, they patrol every day. And at the beginning, when we first developed the project, they had three patrols a day, and I was in writing, they were down there consistently, they're down there every weekend. You know, if anybody wants to see that, we have cameras, we have on video, we have the photograph, they are down there consistently, we know them on a first-name basis, and they respond very quickly, as does the Lockport Police.
Perfect, that's great.
As does the Forest, I was just starting to back up. Also, the Forest Reserve Police, they're down there consistently as well, and as well the Conservation Police, they're also there as well.
All right.
Well, as long as we can address that, I'm all for it. As long as they stick up to their word and the city sticks up to theirs, I mean, it's going to go through, so move forward, not backwards.
On a slightly separate issue, what do, Ben, could we take a look at the CIP? Is this Snake of the Woods ever get curb and gutter and all that stuff? Is that part of it?
Well, frankly, again, it keeps coming up to the point where it's not city property or jurisdiction for a road.
No, no, I'm talking about that neighborhood.
Where he lives.
Davie's and those streets.
Oh, for, yeah, I can talk to Amy about that.
All right. Because I think it would also help feeling some security with, you know, as we get curb and gutter, and I know we're doing it over time here, but just curious myself. All right, so what's next over there, Ben?
Well, that'll be on the city council agenda later this evening for your consent and approval to get them going on building permits tomorrow, and then we'll be bringing back more information about the development agreement and the IGA with the Park District, and that'll be on June 3rd.
The road and all that stuff, that's for the June 3rd, okay. All right, so we need to put an action item for the June 3rd meeting with the road, right?
Yeah, it's already on there, so I don't, Tom, do we need to vote for that, or is that okay as far as the... We do have the agreement on the...
It's already on the city council agenda.
It's already on there, so we don't need a motion to put it on there, that's just...
Okay, all right. Okay. All right, anything else? I feel like we've...
We vetted that one pretty good.
Okay, all right. Big thing, it's important to vet it. All right. What's next? Investment policy.
Finance director.
Is that everything? Oh, no, investment...
Lisa gets to talk.
Pam. Did you fall asleep?
Oh, Lisa, that's Lisa. Sorry.
We need another two-minute break, sorry.
Yes, I need my break. Somebody hit me in the head with this gavel. All right, go ahead, Lisa.
The city has an investment policy, and it needs to be reviewed every year, so any revisions need to be approved by council. We just have one revision this year, and that is to allow letters of credit as allowable collateralization on our investments. So, we will seek to have this on the next city council agenda in June, and if we can put it on as a consent item, it's a pretty simple change.
Yeah, it's fine with me. Any concerns about that? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, Tom, you want to take this one?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this goes back to an annexation agreement with what was known as the Patty Cakes Bakery property in 2005. At that time, there was a discussion about doing a regional lift station in that area that would serve rapidly developing areas, or at least what we thought would be rapidly developing areas. With the downturn in the economy and the recession that hit in 2008, the development didn't come to fruition, but the need for some kind of sewer service to the Patty Cakes property, which is comprised of a bakery and a restaurant currently, that need is still there. So, what we're proposing is an amendment to the 2005 agreement that would allow a private lift station to be constructed by the city on property that is owned by the owner of the Patty Cakes property, and then it would be connected to the city's sewer system. This would bring Patty Cakes into compliance with the Will County Health Department requirements. Currently, they're using a tank system, and there's some pumping that takes place, and it's some, it's a situation that the Health Department would like to see terminated. Because it's an annexation agreement, it requires a public hearing to be held. We're recommending that the public hearing be held at the next city council meeting on June 3rd, and that the annexation agreement be amended to allow for the change in how service would be, sanitary sewer service would be provided to this property, and that there would be a permanent easement granted to the city to be able to facilitate this change in the agreement. I'm not sure if I've mentioned this before, I'm sure Mr. Caneva did in the past, but anytime you're changing an annexation agreement, it does take six yes votes to do that, because any approval of an annexation agreement under Illinois law requires a majority, a two-thirds majority of the members holding office. So, this would be coming back to you on June 3rd for a public hearing. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Questions out here? All good, so we'll do a public hearing next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything for new business? All right. Then it's just a motion to adjourn committee of the whole.
Make the motion.
Alderman Van demir, seconded by Alderwoman Bartelson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. You guys ready to just rock and roll through this?